Thank you very much. Approximately 130 square block area around Fairground Park. The concept of a neighborhood around a green space is nothing new. But the concept of a sustainable district around this particular green space, that's one of the most historic green spaces could be argued in the city, has some weight. And the size is certainly significant enough that we could make a strong and lasting impact. And the idea of potentially of working with green infrastructure to monetize ecosystem services and bring economic value to a neighbor that, neighborhood that isn't, you know, serious need of those kinds of assets also makes a lot of sense. So that's kind of the crux of the concept, which I actually came up with almost over ten years ago with Alderman Carter, God rest his name, in the Walma Park area in 1990.
And Jubilee is a client of yours?
Jubilee is a client that we've outreach to with this grant opportunity. Jubilee has been in the neighborhood for well over a decade doing, two decades, I'm sorry. You built the church a decade ago, but been there for two decades. And very strong. And this is Pastor Crumley. Pastor, do you want to say something about it?
Just real briefly about Jubilee. Pastor Leroy Gill, he's the founding head pastor of the church, pastoring the church. You know, I've been working together for 23 years. I live on Hebert Street. He lives on Hebert Street, part of the community. I'm doing a whole bunch of things. We've done some housing rehab. We have a lawn care and landscaping business and training men and helping people do relevant things in our community. So that's, we are very close.
And so the opportunity to work with a horticulture, just the horticulture group that uses, using and training local folks in the neighborhood is, underpining of the original concept, of course, as well. So Jubilee Community Church has been kind enough to accept this grant from MSD and kind of work through some of the kinks of a unique project of its nature. I can happily report that we just finally received MSD's permit as of now, which was three and a half months.
Congratulations.
So, thank you.
And it's part of their overall consent decree, the hundred dollars.
So this is a little slide that shows out of 4.7 billion on the consent decree, we're going to spend at least 100 million on the green infrastructure part, which was mentioned about three times on every page of the original consent decree. So there's a difference between those two numbers, if anybody can see, and that's what we're kind of talking about right now.
We're working on spending a good portion of 100 million ourselves with green construction with them, mostly.
They've only spent about like, what, 7% of that, 2% of that, 7%?
Well, it's because of...
The reimbursement.
Well, one of the issues is, is requiring upfront funding for the project, which has been typical for a while. We also received a grant at the Boyd's World Club, previous or Jubilee relationship, which has not been built to date for that reason. But, next slide please.
Part of what we've been doing is, at Jubilee, we've already raised over $75,000 as our first part of that. So we utilized those funds so far, and then we're going to be working with the bank to get the rest of the construction funding. So we're investing our resources and hopefully we'll have our own fund going forward to be able to hopefully more than grant.
So that also kind of kickstarts development by Jubilee Community Church as well. But what I was going to say before was, I just forgot, so.
So this was an example of some of the...
Oh, no, I just didn't remember. So in terms of the funding, right now, the early action grant is where we receive funding for this district, the project. It's kind of a one these thing, but now MSD, I have some background in stormwater from back in the year 2000 when I was a developer, did some rain garden work. So now we're back in the city doing system work. I really kind of closely followed this field for the past couple of decades. MSD is looking to fund these things as they must, but they still aren't really exactly sure what they want to do. I'm probably not telling anybody, but I think I know them. So that discussion is still going on. Our engineering record for this project has had, there's some fairly close connections there. And we're trying to make, have to make some sense of it because we'd like to be able to fund it through the procurement office and overlay some performance with potential other market tax benefits or some other things that could then make sense for a district wide solution where this just becomes a prototype and we don't have to go back to them for a grant every time we want to build one of these. So that is the big idea. And an example of green infrastructure is defined there, a decentralized technology that operates through a series of interconnected block systems or BMPs and any number of different technologies so that what MSD wanted to do back in the prehistoric days was catch the water and get rid of it as fast as possible. Now we're pretty much going to do the opposite, catch the water and keep it around as long as you're not hurting anything for the greatest extent possible because of downstream erosion and other issues. So that's the concept of green infrastructure. Paradigm and anomaly shift that it poses with the old engineering studies is that unlike when they're solving the problem in South City on this river to Pear, doing a mile-long tunnel, here, a decentralized approach with a district solution and agglomeration makes more sense because no one's going to put a mile-long tunnel under Fairgrounds Park. So that's where the decentralized solution, Roy, in an urban context makes a lot of sense. Couple of examples, as you can see, a lot of natives, highly landscaped, well-maintained, but you need less maintenance than this than you need for a typical test tube turf grass which you have to mow twice a week in high season, by the way. So next slide. The opportunity for work creation within the neighborhood, a key piece of it.
And the Jubilee Church doing some of that type of stuff.
We've done a small community garden the last few years and with this then we'll be able to expand and have water very available without extra pay.
So the different amenities of having the local water without having to be, have it to be metered, when you're growing and, you know, doing community CFAs or farmers' markets or whatever you're doing with food, in terms of training and also growing and other things, is another economic boost through the area. And then you've got the whole food desert discussion as well, of course. Another couple more examples, as you probably are familiar, many other older urban areas in the country are looking at these technologies. New York is not the least of these. There's one in Pittsburgh and one in Detroit that call it the Agribud, which I thought was kind of cool. And then another concept of just the green infrastructure off in the Denver-Stapleton Development Area where they're using a lot of natives and rain capture, and then there's a New York, Queens example as well. So elevated speech on the big idea, public land for public benefit, effectively zero gentrification through grassroots plan and outreach process with rehab, weatherizing existing buildings and then infill on a very sensitive community plan basis. And then a district of gardens, tons of work. We're done.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Pastor. So just to wrap this up, the proposed rezoning of this parcel would achieve three objectives according to Goni Administrator, one of which is that it would allow the petitioner to continue with sustainability efforts to improve land and its healthy vacant and under-legalized. As we saw, the proposed rezoning is in conformity with the slough and staff is recommending approval of the proposed zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, we have two representatives, Pastor Andy, Crumley, and Mr. Chalmers.
Okay. With that, then, are there any questions for any of the commissioners on the phone first? We'll take it that way. Hearing none, then, are there any questions for those commissioners present?
Jeffrey has, ma'am.
Yes.
Jeffrey raised his hand, Mr. Chalmers.
I appreciate that.
See me.
I want to make sure I'm clear. So currently it's zone commercial, where the church property is the parking lot, the vacant property on Old Bear, correct?
The Old Bear is B.
The church property? Old Bear is B.
Let me refer back to all the teams.
That's what I thought too.
Right there. Well, that's the strategic land use plan.
Oh, that's the...
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Okay.
So the rezoning site is shown in orange, that's G, local commercial. The adjacent parcel is B, two family.
And the reason it needs to be converted to residential is because MSD, are they doing...
It needs to be consolidated. It needs to be consolidated. There's a judgment call as to what the correct zoning district should be. In this case, we're going to go with the B zoning district, although there are arguments we made for rezoning to G as well.
So what's happening to the parking lot?
I don't believe anything is...
So it's just, we have to... What, okay, so what's the point in having them consolidated in order to make where they connect?
MSD requires...
MSD requires...
MSD requires the consolidation for the dedication of the easement, one single owner on the entire parcel.
Oh, to vacate the alley.
Yeah, well, that's the other single owner for the entire...
For the MSD requirement, we wouldn't even be here.
Okay.
Because for building committee purposes, it doesn't need to be consolidated.
Okay.
But because MSD is requiring the consolidation and we don't allow parcels that are done differently to be consolidated, they have to do a...
Why is it necessary to vacate the alley?
And we have done that. We've done these MSD able to side lock things before, but this is a really important...
And I get that, but it's something being built on the alley.
No, it's necessary to vacate the alley because we have pots going underneath.
And MSD has, like, okay.
And it makes it, so if we drew a new rectangle, it would be taking everything from the O and Old Bear straight across and all the way up to Carter, and we'd have a big rectangle and become the new site, the new single parcel.
So in effect, the new parcel is going to extend here to Grand, down to here, and then pick up at this alley and then close the loop right there, and that would be the new parcel.
Okay.
No further questions.
No approval.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been seconded for approval of the zoning from G to B. Any hearing no proposals, can we have a vote?
Alderman Boyd?
President.
Hi. Can we do previous roll?
Sure.
Yes, we can go. Trace you on here.
Okay.
Hi. Mr. Bradley.
Hi.
Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Mr. Peoples.
Hi.
Mr. Reese.
Hi.
Mr. Boas.
Hi.
Mr. Vine.
Hi.
Chair Stroudler.
Hi.
Motion passes with all present voting.
Hearing that?
Yes, sir. That's good. And we've concluded this item. I'll just take one note is, those of us who are also working with MSD finds this particularly exciting. We find it exciting that a community organization, as the church has raised to 75 grand and is also doing the community outreach, are pretty exciting. So we wanted you to see that aspect. And ultimately, if the church was to sell their property with an underlying slough the way it is, it could go to a commercial use, sort of action. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very much. Thanks very much.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me. Moving on. Mr. Chrisy Boas, who's joined us, is participating with the city and MSD on those efforts where we're doing a lot of things in Los Angeles, I'm taking.
I know you're working in the Walma Park area.
When it's all done, you all come see it, it is going to be gorgeous. Beautiful. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, our next item is the Chapter 99.
All right, is, is Roman making that presentation?
Yes. From one, I'll do at the beginning, this is the type of Chapter 99s I particularly like because it's for geography. There's not, still we tell Roman it's thunder, it's not for a single parcel, it's for geography and the neighborhood, and trying to attract developers to it.
So this is the Chapter 99, letting study redevelopment plan for the 4200 to 98 and 4201 to 99, Harris Avenue redevelopment area. It's a site of about four and a half acres in size. It consists of all the parcels that front on the 4200 block of Harris Avenue between Carter Avenue and Penrose Street. It's about midway between O'Fallon Park and Fairground Parks, Fairground Park, excuse me, in the O'Fallon neighborhood. The existing uses are primarily single-family and two-family buildings. I think there's one, four families. And then there are some vacant lots on the block. The general condition of the redevelopment area is bare to four condition, and the purpose of the redevelopment plan is to encourage infill development as well as the renovation of the existing residential buildings by providing ten years of tax abatement. Unlike most of the redevelopment plans that the planning commission sees, there is no specific redevelopment project or developer associated with this redevelopment plan. It was initiated by Alderman John Collins Mohammed of the 21st Ward, who you may remember a couple of weeks or so ago sponsored another redevelopment plan where he wanted to kickstart some development along the commercial district, along Natural Bridge Avenue in these ward. This is an aerial photo of the redevelopment area. Again, includes all the parcels along the 4200 block of Harris between Carter and Penrose, at the total of 36 parcels, 25 of which are residential buildings, again, mostly single and two-family buildings, as well as 11 vacant lots. There are at least five vacant buildings on the block, four of which are located next to each other roughly in that location, and six of those vacant lots are on the eastern side of Harris at either end of the block, so... Even though the building is shown there, and a building is shown here, those buildings have all been taken down. So you've got three vacant lots at this end and three vacant lots on that end. So when you add up those vacant buildings and vacant lots, there are 16 of those, which is almost 50% of the entire block is vacant building or vacant lot. The other backup one out is that 16 of the parcels are owned by LRA, and that includes all 11 of the vacant lots. So this is a photo of the 4200 block of Harris. You can see some vacant lots on the, on the right there, and you can see relatively few street trees, so the block looks really barren the way it is currently. These are the five vacant buildings on the block. You can see four of them all next to each other at the lower end of the block, as well as one located mid-block. These are some photos of the vacant lots, the clusters of the vacant lots showed on the right, and not photos of the ones that are at either end of the particular 4200 block. Now that I painted a very sad picture of this block, I also want to point out there are some very well-maintained buildings on the block as well, so some people are doing the right thing. You can see some well-maintained, single-family buildings such as those. These two are also on the block, and as well as a family, even a four family, which oftentimes is the first kind of structure that experiences deterioration, but that four family is a pretty good shape. In terms of the strategic land use plan, it designates the entire redevelopment area as well as the surrounding blocks as a neighborhood preservation area, which basically calls out for infill development and renovation of the existing residential buildings. So the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan. There's no provision for the use of eminent domain. The redevelopment plan is providing for the use of up to 10 years of tax abatement does an incentive to try to attract developers to this particular block, and staff is recommending approval of the redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any question from those on the phone first? Hearing none. Alderman Boyd, any questions, since your hands up? I can't see you, but I believe it is.
Not at this time.
With that, any other statements or comments for, in reference to this?
No approval.
If it's been moved, approved, and called for second roll, any objections? Hearing none, previous roll accepted, passing of 18 RDR.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Don.
On your agenda, there's a broad list of delegated items.
Yes.
These are of purview of under an acre, the delegation to the director to act on. The first two are from November, most of them acted on. The rest of these are just a little fortunate, although we're short-staffed, but Roman chose not to travel. And we, ahead of the game a little bit here, these are a listing of the ones that were approved at the LCRA December 19 meeting that are now on my desk, going to review what we view as approved, so that you know those upcoming attractions for me to look at. I do want to point out just that one of these is one that Randy, the associate, knows of. Has he seen it at a previous board? It's been to the preservation board, it's been to LCRA. I'll be looking at it, and what we're looking at is redevelopment on South Broadway, and these are slides from the preservation board. That building currently owned by the St. Louis Community College District. To be proposed for demolition, it's been approved for demolition by the preservation board, cultural resources, with a variety of conditions. That's the geography, it's on a block adjacent to Bush Stadium. It says the structure, as you've seen it, that the structure and conversations have included such things as retaining the facade and that facade with higher or lower stories of what is to be a very tall building. So it's a, it's a skyscraper proposed for St. Louis on this one parcel, facing Bush Stadium, facing the arch, I mean, it has four sides, of course. Well, wait a minute, we know architects that have done things on our site, so I shouldn't not say, of course. So this is my last slide. This is just to sort of talk a little bit about there's some buildings in the vicinity. This is the site, the Millennium Hotel is, this is going to be, across the way, a parking garage, a parking lot here. I point this out to say, the redevelopment plan has been authorized by LCRA. They have not produced a document yet for me to look at and review. I expect that document and data. I am particularly wanting to, and have been elbowing them, to be quite conscious about making the determination of blight for this area, because I want that to be defensible because that's something that I get upset when our sister city of Clayton maybe does it, and it's not in full research as to how the blight is for the area, so I'll be looking at that when it comes. It will, of course, be their work on tax abatement, which is of their purview, not ours, and I'll be looking at the design standards. My suspicion is that they will make a particular statement about demolition and coming down, and I'll get it hopefully soon, do the analysis, and make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, because as a redevelopment plan, the next step will be at the Board of Alderman.
Very good.
On this diagram, and sorry if you have to use the pointer again, where is the Ballpark Village, where is that tower proposed?
Oh, good, 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 good question, and I don't know the best answer, but I think it's here.
Okay. I mean, I've been curious where 300 Broadway actually is from this perspective, and I never, I, I know, so thanks for this one.
And, and, you know, we're... I throw it at the wall. Oh, yeah, it went into my eyes, it didn't work too. Yeah, so the mixture of this, of course, is Ballpark Village is on land that was vacated by the previous stadium. We have the Millennium Hotel in this mix. We have developers prepared to take a risk to provide housing downtown. We're just going to make them go through the checks and balances, and appreciate that it started with the preservation board, LCRA, now to delegation for me to look at the redevelopment plan, make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, and it'll be approved if we move on. Upcoming year.
Is there any conversation at all about government investment on it in itself?
Oh, no. It wouldn't bother me.
Well, I mean, it's been like that forever, and it appears to me from everything that I've ever read that it's not cost, affected to renovating it.
Good on you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Randy.
Oh, it just, the Lawrence Group several years ago expressed interest in it because honestly, you know, this is just my personal preservationist self. It represents an era and style of architecture that is quickly depleting. It is a significant, a distinctive tower. It does cost more to renovate that, and there is more of a narrow market for like round buildings unless it's something like a transient use or hotel or something that's like residential, there's hardly any help to do round buildings. You know, I have no doubt, it certainly is on its own merit, it would qualify for some historic designation and tax credit, but making the numbers work is a whole other thing. It could be beautiful.
Depending on the cost, you're probably talking, I do $100 million in dollars to develop it?
I have no idea.
A couple of things, is it's owned by a group in Singapore, or also cascading, it's London and then owned by a group in Singapore. They have maintained it well for all exterior purposes, while it's been not used, have to appreciate that. So you sometimes get dull about it, is you don't go by it from the drakes flapping off the windows. But it is, as Randy says, an example, it's this whole site, so there's the building here, the Crescent, and then the traditional round building. Different parts of it have been examined as whether they could be standalone on the National Register, the tire kicking of the ability to renovate it. I shouldn't generalize, but there might be a belief that entities in Singapore might have a few dollars. I'll put this just in the fray to say, as the city looks at this, we might be thinking that the need, need to provide cities incentives and subsidies to make something work on the Millennium Hotel site might be greater than the norm to really make it work, and that work thing could include its renovation with the added cost or partial renovation and hopefully that they waited this long in anticipation of the market going, of the Arch Project coming, and hopefully have a good mix for that.
Whatever it's worth, I had a hell of a 21st birthday party there.
Along to their chimney.
Well, what's cool about, is the arch, the old Bush Stadium and the stone versus concourse is what it was built as. They were built almost simultaneously, right around the same general time period, and they are, were supposed to complement each other. So there are three distinct projects that all kind of reflected certain aspects of the other's design, and that alone, you know, unfortunately, it's missing some teeth now, but it's a cool kind of space-age development scheme in that area.
This land is really pretty good-looking.
I mean, it could, if they were renovated, nice, it could be amazing. It's a really cool-looking tower, I think.
I only asked that question, we've spent so long, and it's...
Oh, I forgot.
Yeah.
I've forgotten.
I think 2000...
The only reason I really know is because the steam got cut off probably about eight years ago, maybe? Eight, nine years? They weren't... I mean, we're not pleased when some investor says the clothing is not rolling, but they came in and were pretty diligent with city departments about how it goes down. One of the things I'm encouraging LRA, to LCRA to do, and you heard me sort of through my editorial, was that redevelopment plan up in the 21st Ward, that they're doing multiple parcels, not just a single parcel. We need to be thinking about this as a redevelopment area with those interlocking concerns and how to incentivize it to the greater good for all of it, so. There we are. Thanks for being here. And don't have anything else to report. I will report is that the closing for the position we have vacant is, one of the positions is the 19th, so I'm looking forward to that, with candidates, and glad you're all here for the new year, and we'll meet again in February 7.
Well, with, with that, no other, any new business? Well, with, with that, no other, any new business?
No.
Saying none? Emote, move to close?
Previous roll.
No rolls needed, it's been moved to close in the meeting. But thank you. With that, we'll get the meetings out.